Okay, if you can please rise for the fudgelations.
Just the United States of America and to the reflection for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call of board members.
Jill Kester, here.
Linda Slipsma, here.
Wendy Hoxma, present.
Randy Milnick, absent.
And Tim Aaron's absent.
Yes. All right, so now we're on set, adjust, and approve the meeting agenda. So I provided to all the board members a addition to our agenda today for appointment to the Board of Review. And I would like to place that right after public comment, since we have a candidate here in the room.
I'm not sure, is this where I pull something from the consent calendar?
No, this is just the addition of, I left it on your desk there.
Okay.
The appointment for a Board of Review member, and so it'll be right after public comment.
Okay.
Uh, any other changes anybody has in the agenda?
One, do you have an addition to anything?
I do, but I didn't think I needed to do it now, right?
Do I?
Bill's bills paid for.
Correspondence to add to.
Okay, what correspondence do you have to add?
I have a E. Johnson to add to the consent calendar correspondence. It's regarding short-term rentals. And then an R. Bridgeforth, about a campground. And what was that name again? Bridgeforth?
Counting stall.
Now I do want to add a bill to the bills for approval.
Okay. Okay, any other changes to the agenda? All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Slipsma, seconded by Kester. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None opposed, that motion passes. All right, next we have declaration of conflict of interest. Do any of the board members have a conflict of interest with the content of tonight's meeting?
I do not.
I do not?
No.
No conflict of interest noted. So next we have public comment. Any person is permitted to address the meeting of the Township Board. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Comments shall be directed to the Board with questions directed to the Chair. Any person wishing to address the Board shall speak from the lectern right here. Um, and state your name and address. Persons may address the Board on matters that are relevant to township government issues. The Chair shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed five minutes, excluding the time needed to answer Board member questions. And in order to avoid unscheduled debates, the Board generally will not comment or respond to presenters. Silence or non-response from the Board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement. Who would like to step forward and make a public comment?
Mike Jacobson, Skewout Point Road. Uh, the first thing I want to say is, uh, I find it appalling that we have to send a self-addressed stamped envelope to get a receipt for our taxes. Uh, this is a, I think most people probably get a receipt because they pay electronically, so they have their own receipt that way. So the few people that the Township would have to buy a stamp and envelope for, that you insist that they send their own to get a receipt, is ridiculous. Uh, I pay thousands of dollars every year in property taxes. I think I'm being ripped off that you can't afford one stamp and one envelope to send me a receipt. Secondly, it's recently come to my attention, there's a property owner that owns property on the the swamp trail, which you call, uh, Low C Road Trail. He's been told, uh, to just go ahead and access his property via the trail, but don't tell anybody. This is wrong. The state of Michigan, the, the Supreme Court in the state of Michigan has ruled that we all who own property on that two-track have the right to access our property through that two-track. And the fact that you would deny these people the, the ability to do that, which you've been doing for quite some time now, and then turn around and tell them, oh, go ahead, but just be quiet. Uh, you're not gonna, you're not the only board that'll ever be here. You need to set a precedence and follow the laws of Michigan. I mean, the Supreme Court of Michigan has ruled that we can do this. That most of us who own property on that two-track have owned it since before that two-track was given to the, was taken over by the township. That means it was a public road right-of-way. We all had the right to access our property through that public road right-of-way. Now, you telling people that they can't, it's a taking. You're, you're, you're taking the ability for somebody to use their property. And, uh, quite frankly, I think the Township's headed for a lawsuit if we keep this up. And I don't want to see the Township sued over this stupidness. Uh, but I can tell you, I will join the lawsuit. I will kick money in and sign my name to the lawsuit if it goes that far. Because this affects me, my property, and the, and the saleability of my property. Financially, it affects me. So I, I would, uh, I, I really hope that you can bring yourself uh, to, to go examine the law, find out what you're really up against, what you're really talking about, and right this wrong. The, we, we all have the right, the people who own, now I know the public may not have the right to use it, but the people who own property back there, and that acts, that has accessed their property, they have the right to drive back there to access their property. And I have permission from more than one person who owns property back there to cut firewood off their property. Well, I'm telling you, I'm not carrying the firewood up to my house in a wheelbarrow. I drive back there every year, bring my firewood in, and go, go, take me a quarter if you want, you'll lose. I'll fight it. Appreciate it if you'd straighten this out. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mike. Would anybody else like to make a public comment?
Melissa Melton, 5044 Vinton Road. Uh, as you guys know, also the Parks and Rec, um, chairperson. So today I'm speaking on behalf of more of the Parks Committee, just to openly speak about some of the concerns that were emailed um, by a board member earlier this week, and just in regards to the Park Rec Plan in general. So, uh, I'll make notes. So some of Randy's, uh, questions, uh, or concerns, um, while I'm not disagreeing with them, I think that, you know, he, he opens up a lot of, of good discussion. I don't think any of his concerns negate any reason why we can't move forward with the Park and Rec Plan process, um, which is going to include public comment, which is going to include a 30-day review for that public to be able to come back and also give the public time in a, a meeting, um, after that 30-day review is over with. So to his first point on his issues, page 59 of the plan describes the adoption process. There, you know, we threw in that October 21st date, that was the first meeting date that the Prac had said, we have consensus, we want the Board to start reviewing the plan, give us their feedback, and start this motion, you know, rolling, um, in hopes that we can get a, a final draft, um, validated enough to be able to go then out for public comment, which is where we're at today. There has been a couple revisions of the, the draft since that October 21st date. So of course we can update and amend that page appropriately, so that's not an issue. It's simply a page that has to be changed as the dates actually solidify. Um, his point number two, the plan, again, page 59, indicates that the Township scheduled and held a public hearing on January 22nd, 2026. So again, it's a placemarker, simply as a date that we, as we were going through the date profiles of what needs to happen, and I think you guys already have a board meeting scheduled. That was the most logical next, uh, board, uh, date that was available. So that's why that date was, um, put in there, not that it's been approved or motioned by the Board. Um, it's simply just a placemarker that I think seems reasonable. Uh, his item number three was regarding the DNR guidelines. And we are meeting everything about the, the DNR guidelines to give the 30-day public comment period, uh, to get them do the, um, public review meeting or hearing. Um, as long as everything's documented as you go along, you know, we have everything in plan and process to do that. He refers to the board meeting of the January 22nd as 9:00 a.m. He didn't feel that that was appropriate because it doesn't, uh, to, it would send a bad message, basically, as a public hearing. That's a board decision, you know, so again, you know, we, we're trying to rely on as much, um, you know, future dates that we knew that the Board was meeting without creating a secondary board meeting to have to, to do a, a review process. Um, his point number five, the DNR says that we can hold the public hearing and approve the plan at the same meeting, which is true. So that, again, still stays within the diet, deadline timeframe that we, um, believe that we can, um, take this plan. Now, after the 30-day review, one of his points is, is, you know, doesn't give enough time for if there's substantial changes. You know, and of course, if we get a huge amount of public input back that there's substantial amount of change recommendations, and the Board sees that, I, I, you know, at that January 22nd, if you guys do approve that as a date, we can make that decision then, saying, okay, maybe we start over, and maybe we do forward, or, uh, press on with future draft, uh, changes. So it's not set in stone, but I think we need to get that public input. We need to get the information back in order for us to finalize things. Um, so Jill had a, a communication with a DNR rep. I actually spoke to her today. Her description of looking at our rec plan draft, um, was that we checked all the boxes. She actually made a comment to me that we actually had a lot more detail than she sees most townships, and so she was very impressed. And she was also impressed with the graphics and how, you know, the design looked. She thought it was well put together. Um, so she did not have any, um, issues or concerns. The only comment that she did make to me was, you know, that when we look at our goals, we want them to be a broad goal, so that we're not subject to limitations of future projects. So as long as we have, um, broad goals, we can.
That's our time limit.
Oh, okay.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would anybody else like to make a public comment at this time? All right, then we will move next to, um, Jason, if you can step forward, we'll address, uh, the Board of Review appointment that I distributed to the board members. So this is Jason, is it Aker?
Aker.
Aker. And so, um, I've talked to Jason about the duties of the Board of Review, and we've talked kind of in detail about what that entails. And, um, I'm bringing him forward to recommend him for appointment. So, uh, for the board members, he's here if you have any questions to ask him about, um, about this position.
Can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in?
Sure. Yeah, I'm born and raised here, Wentel Crap at schools. My grandfather and grandmother are here on the walls, and, um, got some family history with, uh, the Township Board. My grandpa was on the Board in the eighties, my dad was on the Board in the nineties, and I mean, the tax, you know, the tax assessment process and review process is interesting to me. It's something that I actually like to learn more about. I just think this would be a cool opportunity. I know it's an alternate, not full-time, or, you know, full position, but it's a good starting point if it ever evolves into any further than that, but, yeah, so work at Hagerty, been there for 10 years. Um, was in the Air Force prior to that, uh, you know, just kind of, family is all here, like, my dad's still here, and so I just think it'd be cool to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Um, I would just like to add that, um, you know, I, I think my predecessor had looked for people to join the Board of Review, um, for a while, without finding somebody. And recently I talked to Jason, partly because I was informed by some of our existing regular three members that, um, we had one absent at our meeting earlier this week. And I was also informed that, um, there's an anticipated absence of a member at our March meetings, which are in a more intense period, where we have to have those two, um, six-hour, uh, periods to listen to appeals in mid-March. And so, um, Jason here, if we appoint him, he will be actually getting training in January. So it was critical to get him appointed in order to get him trained, so he can assist in March.
Right. Yeah, I'm just happy to be a part of it, if, if it's something you guys will allow.
Yeah, other questions at all, Wendy?
Nope.
Nothing? I make a motion to confirm the recommendation of the supervisor appointing Jason Aker to the two-year term on the Whitewater Township Board of Review. The term will end on December 31, 2027.
I'll second. So motion made by Hoxma and seconded by Kester. All those in favor?
I'm sorry. You are right, it says roll call, and I didn't.
Yeah, okay, sorry, roll call, please, Wendy. Kester?
Yes.
Slipsma?
Yes.
Hoxma, yes. And Aaron's and Milnick absent. All right, so a motion passes. So, thank you and welcome, Jason. I will, um, go ahead and register you for that class.
Yeah.
And start getting you all the information.
Okay, and then I'm supposed to come back and do the swearing-in sometime?
Within 10 days, please.
Within 10 days.
Yes, within 10 days, and, uh, Wendy's here mornings, night till noon.
Do it tomorrow if you want me to.
Sure.
What time are you here?
In the morning.
Oh, okay.
But we can always talk about, like, right about nine.
Yeah, that's fine, I can stop by around nine or 10 if you're here, so.
All right, good. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
All right. Okay, we have no public hearing today, so moving on to reports and presentations. Um, we've got Chief Morgan first.
Yeah. Um, you guys have already seen the report. I just want to make the Board aware, we have had a couple, um, kind of significant incidents that I would like to kind of just bring, um, to the Board's attention. We did, as many of you are probably aware, of the Calcasas incident, um, this last weekend. Our units were requested into Calcasas County about an hour into the call. They had already been working for an hour. And so, we were called in as mutual aid, so we responded with myself, um, Firefighter Strine, Lieutenant Haskin, and Lieutenant Tilly, and Firefighter, um, Whistler, uh, with our cold or ice rescue suits. Um, I assisted in the command, and, uh, Lieutenant Haskin and Firefighter Strine assisted in search and recovery, uh, search and rescue operations, while, um, Tilly and Whistler assisted in support onshore with the people coming in and out of the ice. Uh, these are long, labor-intensive incidents, and so Calcasas had stripped almost all of their resources and had them at scene, and they were just, they were gassing, so they called in the next closest, which was us. We've definitely used them in a similar situation, so that's just kind of that we give, we take, um, when we need to. Um, second incident was, we actually had a successful CPR in progress safe, where the patient walked out of the hospital, um, several days later, at the casino. On the 22nd of this month, we will be honoring and, uh, giving recognition to the casino security staff for quick deployment of an AED and high-quality CPR, which allowed myself and Lieutenant, um, Haskin to get on scene and take over. And, um, and Mar got there about four and a half minutes later. We loaded and we went, and the person walked out of the hospital about five days later. So we'll be doing an award ceremony for the security staff, and then there'll be another award ceremony later down the road for our staff, from the tribe. So, those are just kind of two significant events that have happened in the last 15 days, so I just want to bring them to your attention, um, just 'cause, uh, not everybody's on social media. So I want to make the Board aware of that. Uh, Firetruck update, I did talk to CSI. We, uh, it's been, it's being built as we talk. It's off, uh, it's in paint right now, so I can't go put my hands on it, but it's getting, the body's getting painted finally. So it's just moving along to those steps, uh, so I will keep updating you each month as that moves through the process, but, uh, yeah, other than that, just some highlights again, you know, Firefighter Strine just completed Instructor One, which is a very intensive class, so he's moved up. Um, he's kind of moving himself up into an officer role at some point. Uh, Gavin Graves successfully completed his EMT class, and then I just finished a weekend at, uh, teaching at an instructor's conference for the service. So we've all been keeping ourselves incredibly busy, so. Got so many questions.
All right.
All right.
I think we're all set.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Um, I believe, uh, there's a written report on the Planning Commission. Um, so Deb, here next, with the zoning report.
Hi there. Um, the zoning report's a little longer. I'm trying to include zoning ordinances, so people actually get a feel of what the ordinance actually says. So when an amendment comes before the Planning Commission or before the Board, that they have an idea of what is being enforced out there. Um, I did go to a few training classes in the last 45 days, a few of them were webinars. Um, one of the things, I, I was on one for, uh, Wells and Soils today. Um, I spent a day in, uh, Torch Lake with, uh, Tip of the Mitt and, uh, Michigan State and Eagle. They did one on shorelines, um, about, uh, some of the things that are happening with inland lake shorelines, as well as the Great Lakes. Some of the different zoning districts they're making changes to, and some other townships in the state of Michigan. Um, it was pretty interesting. Probably the most interesting one I went to was on invasive species. Um, and I didn't realize this, but, um, if firewood, soil, mulch, gravel, stone, anything you bring onto your site hasn't been heated to a particular temperature, it could potentially bring in invasive species. They actually had a, um, a DNR conservancy area that they brought in mulch, thinking it was, and they ended up bringing in an invasive mustard that now they have to figure out how to get rid of it. So, um, invasive species are, are a really big thing. Um, obviously, it's always been talked about with firewood and bringing firewood in from other areas. So, um, obviously, it's, it's snow's flying, but I'm still getting complaints for various things, and, um, and investigating them. Uh, if anyone has any questions. I think I've got 94 permits as of, uh, this week. So it's been a pretty busy year, and I plan on summarizing that, um, for the year end, for the Planning Commission, and for the Board. So, any questions for me?
Any questions?
All right.
Okay, thank you, Deb.
All right. Uh, I do not see Tom Bartniky here. Um, Vicki, are you filling in for him on his report, or no?
Okay, all right, just checking.
All right, there is a detailed report in the packet. Uh, Jill, do you have any kind of a report on Parks and Recreation Committee?
Um, nothing, uh, new or unusual, just that we do have the final draft of the five-year Parks and Recreation Plan available, and we'll discuss that a little bit later in the meeting.
Okay. All right, and then there's, um, two other things in the packet that are just for your information as far as there's a recycling, uh, waste survey included, that people can do that, and then, uh, update from Antrim County dams regarding, um, the expected special assessment district on the lakes. All right, moving on to consent calendar. Does anybody have anything that they would like removed from the consent calendar?
I would like to remove number nine, the meeting, meeting minutes for November 13th, and, uh, the revenue and expenditure report.
Um, and Wendy, since you had an addition to the bills for approval, you probably need to remove that too.
Bills for approval, and just adding the recording secretary invoice to it.
Okay, I'm just checking this, all right, is that it for removals?
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to remove those three items as noted. I believe we have to vote on this to pull them from consent, correct?
Yep.
All right. So is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Slipsma, seconded by Kester. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, so I believe first we go ahead and we approve what's left of the consent calendar, is that right? All right, so I'll make a motion to approve. I made a motion to remove items from the consent calendar.
Remove and approve as presented.
I didn't state that. So I might have messed up how I stated that, but I did not state approving that. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
I'll second.
So motion made by Slipsma, seconded by Kester, to approve the consent calendar as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, so I think the first item, uh, Jill, you asked that the meeting minutes be removed for some corrections.
Yeah, um, so the November 13th meeting last month, um, again, uh, one of the things that we talked about in last month's meeting was having the meeting minutes really reflect, uh, what is happening and being said in the meetings. And once again, I do not feel like this, uh, go line by line, go through what you want to change.
Yeah, I think you need to state.
Um, well, it was, I know that.
On point of order, I must be allowed to finish speaking as the chairperson. You need to state what you want changed, removed, or added.
Um, well, I guess in a nutshell, I would like added, um, everything that I read in my statement prior to, uh, having Wendy submit her statement as part of the record. And there was not a single thing said or reflected in the meeting minutes uh, that we actually discussed in regards to why we have a CPA firm, um, now looking at our books. So again, I just feel like these meeting minutes were represented very unfairly, and it is an abuse of her position to be able to.
That's a personal comment. That's a point of order regarding a personal comment. You stated that you want your comments more, more of your comments reflected.
Correct, and I, I know that Tim submitted, um, a lot of corrections that were in alignment with exactly my same feelings too. Um, I was anticipating that those would be updated.
And say what you'd like, uh, and, um, gone. So I'd like to read something just a little bit about, um, Robert's Rules and why I have the statutory duty of the minutes. Um, so the reason that your minutes, or what you read aloud, wasn't, um, read verbatim, you did not ask for it to be verbatim in the minutes. I actually gave it, I was in action. So I did an action of giving what I read in the minutes to the recording secretary and asked for it verbatim to be in the minutes. And no one objected to that. So therefore, it has to be in the minutes. It will still be included in the minutes, even if we decide to strike all this from the minutes, it will still be included in the minutes. As a clerk, if I do not agree with what the actions of this minutes, then I can also say I do not certify these minutes, and the Michigan law actually overrules Robert's ru- rules. So I am legally responsible for these minutes and for what they say, and that they are, represent the actions legally of this ma- meeting. And I have presented this to you as the actions of that meeting.
But it doesn't represent what actually took place or was said. It is, again, just tweaked and manipulated to be very one-sided.
Then be the clerk.
Many of them are, and that's my complaint.
So I do have a comment regarding this, because I spent quite a bit of time, um, reviewing Robert's Rules. So I do have a comment regarding this because I spent quite a bit of time um, reviewing Robert's rules myself this past month. And I did review this section of the agenda, which can you remind me what page this is on, just so I can find it more quickly?
I do not know which, it's page four of the minutes, that's four of the minutes.
Okay, here it is. Alright, so under, this is all under consideration of CPA firm for services contract. At, as I read MTA guidance and Robert's rules regarding the verbatim comments of Clerk Hoxama. She does have the right to declare the request to do that. And it is incumbent upon us to object and take that to discussion and vote. I was not aware of that until I did some training in the last thirty days. So, but that is really on all of us to object. The other thing is digging into both Robert's rules as well as MTA guidance suggests very brief summaries of comments. Um, I think we all know, my recollection of the meeting is we all discussed and we all know that there are concerns about our revenue and expense reports as far as potentially some errors in some fashion, as well as we discussed concerns with making sure our payroll is exactly correct as we approach the end of the year. Correct, but I'm just saying, we had a lot of discussion around this and the point of the minutes per per the law and per MTA guidance and per Robert's rules guidance is, is to not, the minutes are supposed to be a record of actions. In the case where a request is there for verbatim, again, it is up to us as the governing body to object to that and vote on that. And I take responsibility for some of that because I was not aware of that whole provision. So I'm just putting that out there as education.
I'd like to add that in a court of law, a judge would stand with a clerk that was adding more information into a minutes instead of removing it. So I'd just like to put that out there as well.
And so I think you guys are missing my point. I, I have no problem with you adding what you wanted to add and we all agreed on it at the time. I, my problem is that there is no counterpart to that. You said yourself that there's supposed to be a summary of what was discussed. There's act- actually no summary whatsoever.
There is, there is a summary of what was discussed. And it even says that you expressed your concern about draft minutes from before. I included that. I'm not trying to be one-sided. I'm trying to be factual.
Okay, so I guess lesson learned. If we want something included in the minute, minutes, then we need to request for it.
The clerk has more authority over that as well.
Yes, and I have one other comment from an educational perspective and I will send a note out to Tim and Randy on that since they're not here. But you are also not supposed to make comments after a vote. That is a violation of Robert's.
And I can, I will agree to strike that.
So, and let me finish again without being interrupted. But again, it was our responsibility to call a point of order and anybody can call a point of order at this table. That editorializing uh, after a vote is not permitted. And I would appreciate it if you would strike that. But again, my bad for not calling it up. So I think, in my opinion, in summary, it is really important that we all smarten up on the Robert's rules for the benefit of conducting these meetings. Are there other changes or requests for changes to the minutes?
Before you move on to other changes regarding this discussion, are there any amendments to?
So after the roll call vote was called and it says roll call vote errands, you know, and then it says, yep, and then on to five, it says Clerk Hoxama specified she is not against a review. We're striking that section. Which was my discussion of why I voted no.
Which paragraph under consideration CPA firm?
Yes, it's, it's the paragraph right after the roll call vote on the CPA firm.
The first paragraph then, starting the treasurer cast.
No, the last. After the vote.
It's on the top of page five.
Well, and I know Tim is not here, but I also know that he did submit a number of requested changes, so.
You cannot speak for anyone else.
Is he allowed to?
No, you have to be present at the meeting.
I'm sorry, I started this one on that. I don't know if it's like looking at different places.
I think this printed differently.
Roll call though, unfinished business CPA where?
Oh, I cut a bunch of that.
That's how we get that kind of.
Yep, so Jill, I guess I would like to clarify, is there a specific sentence or phrase that you would like added to the summary of your comments?
No, I did not write out the details. My comment was in general, I would like our meeting minutes to be more fairly representative of everybody's opinion and not tweaked to make it sound biased towards one person. So that is my comment. It's just going forward, I would like them to be more fair.
I would make a motion to approve the November thirteen minutes as amended.
I'll second that. So motion made by Hoxama, seconded by Slobzema to approve, approve the amended minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
So, opposed is specifically Kester, so motion passes. Alright, moving on. We also, we're gonna talk about the revenue and expense report. Hugh, I think you requested that Jill.
Yeah, so um, there's a lot of little things. I'm not gonna be labor. I know this is still kind of a work in progress. But two things that are just still blatantly obvious um, is missing revenue. And I guess I'm just wondering, one, first of all, has, have all the audits been made from the, or all the journal entries been input from the audit? Do we have that balanced?
Is this a question to me?
Yeah.
So I would like to ask the chairperson if the treasurer would tell us if the property taxes have been, um,
So wait a minute, you guys.
Have been point, that's really how it's supposed to be.
You have, you have to. This is a dis- discussion. You need to respond to the question, not redirect to a different topic. So Jill, you asked the question whether the audit, um,
There hasn't been a.
Finedanced audit yet. So, so you're saying no, that hasn't been input, but I'm not sure it would even show up on this report because this is a report of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. So I believe the audit amendments
Would be for the last fiscal year.
Through, yeah, they're for the last fiscal year. That's not what this report is. So it would not change this report.
Yeah, that was kind of a separate question, but um, these reports right here were given to Wendy on um, the second time they were given to her on October thirtieth.
So this is after BSNA? So wait a minute.
Yeah, after BSNA.
Can you identify what that report is?
All the tax revenues and dispersments. So this is all revenue reports that we've been giving her for, since the beginning of time.
So this is tax revenue that was taken in and should be posted?
Yes.
And this is based on, based on what date the tax collection that happened this fall?
From the dispersments. We do every two weeks. And so these were, some of these were input up to, I believe, the end of September. But after that, um, none of these have been input. And my understanding is how they need to be input, we can't do that. We don't have the privilege to do it because it needs to be input as an invoice and then a check needs to be generated. We don't have the capability of doing that. We went over this with Wendy. She understood how, I mean, this is nothing new to her. This is how she's done it. But I'm just wondering why all this revenue still has.
And why haven't you come in and asked me about it instead of doing it in a board meeting?
We did just talk to you about it.
So, after BSNA, it's my understanding that you do a check request to me. I do the checks and disperse them. You are putting them, the revenue is not connected to the general ledger yet. Therefore, it's not gonna show in this report.
These have not been done that way. This was before.
I don't think you understand how that works. So I would recommend you guys get together offline. This is not something that should be in the middle of a board meeting. Are there other comments or concerns with the revenue expense?
I have a question about when the general ledger will be connected to the tax revenue.
It is.
It is not, because it would have showed up in here.
It wouldn't show up because we have no ability to put these in. This is after the fact. It is before everything was connected. We don't have the ability to input these. We were still doing manual checks. So we were doing checks out of sage to get this done. So.
Not connected.
No, it is connected. We just didn't do the check.
Alright, so I believe, so.
These have to be input by the clerk. We do not have the ability to input these.
I would suggest you guys sit down like two adults and please try and figure out how much of this you can clean up so that we don't have to pay a consultant to do this. In the interest of the financial health of this township, you guys need to work through this. It's both of your responsibilities to do so.
It's very hard when I don't have admin rights. I would do it if I could.
I understand you need to, based on segregation of duties, you need to do the items that you are responsible for.
Yes.
And have access to do.
Yeah, so the other item on the revenue and expense report that just kind of jumped out at me was the liability insurance under eight six five, Department eight six five.
Tell us what page you're on. I think I noticed this too.
Yeah, it's the fifty-five.
Hang on, I don't have twenty-eight pages here. I got twenty pages. So what page are you on?
I'm on.
You're on your screen.
My computer, yeah, it's. It would be page four on your report. So it appears that that just needs to be delegated to other departments. Like I noticed the fire department did not have.
There's still, there's still stuff that needs to be, so like when invoices are put in, they're not always done correctly and I need to go back through and look at it.
Okay, yeah, I think there's ample opportunities to start combing through this.
And making sure the conversion was totally correct.
Right, because there's, I mean, there's a lot that looks pretty good financially, but then there's some other stuff. And even just this capital expenditure right below, it looks like we're over our budget, but it didn't, for some reason, it didn't calculate a deficit. I'm not sure why.
And the negative twenty-five thousand under park uh, reservation fees that I.
What page is that on?
Thought that was taken care of. Um, that is on page ten of the report. Page thirty-four if you're on the computer.
I'm on page ten.
The activity that was correcting that motion, that part.
Okay, so that is done.
Yes, okay.
Okay, anything else on that?
That's it.
Alright. Next thing is bills for approval. I did not have any concerns with the bill.
Nor did I.
Um, and I think you pulled this, did you just pull this Wendy because of adding the.
Yeah, it was, yep, last minute. And so just adding this to.
Adding the payment for the recording secretary.
It's just been dispersed into the different, you know, categories.
Alright. Alright, so I think at this point I will make a motion then to now approve the revenue and expense report and the bills for approvals.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Slobzema, seconded by Hoxama. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Point, did you, did you vote? I just asked those opposed.
When you say approve the revenue, is that with the corrections or we're just?
We didn't actually have corrections because I think we cited concerns with several things, but there weren't actual, we're just accepting it as it is right now. I, I don't think there were any specific corrections other than the duty to follow up outside the meeting and continue to audit these reports and get things updated.
Linda, as a technicality, the revenue expense report would be as presented, the bills payable would be as amended since one was added. Just to let you know.
Alright, would you like me to restate that motion?
No.
Okay. I believe if the question you have here Jill, can we proceed without accepting the report? I guess that is an option. Accepting the report doesn't create a specific action.
Yeah, I guess we can accept it as is because it's in here, but I would sure like to see the corrections, especially with the revenue by the next report.
I, I would agree with that as well. Uh, would you like to vote on this?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so all voted in support, none opposed, motion passes. Alright, unfinished business. Uh, the first one on there is park and recreation items. The specific one we have is a proposed addendum to our C two AE existing contract that we had for the electrical upgrade. Hang on a minute. Lost track of my bookmarks here, so I'm. You know, I'm having a problem with my computer. Actually, I'm missing a bunch of pages here. So anyway, on this C two AE contract, um, this is to increase the contract by fifteen thousand dollars. And this is uh, to provide engineering services, to do the engineering work in terms of drawings and uh, quotation requirements for the boat wash station. So does anybody have any questions on that?
Jill?
Have I to make the motion?
Uh, yes, you may.
Uh, motion to approve the proposed C two AE campground electrical upgrade. Contract amendment two, to include the boat wash station designed for fifteen thousand dollars, which revises the total contract amount to forty-seven thousand two hundred dollars.
And I will second that motion. So a motion made by Kester and seconded by Slobzema. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Alright. So I will proceed to sign that contract. Uh, the next thing we have is just a verbal update on CPA firm, Mayor Kaster, Kaster, it's hard to say this, Kasterian. Payroll review update, that was the first uh, task that we gave them. Do you, do you have something you wanna share Wendy on that, since that's action that's with you?
I think it's been uh, uh, a, a long process of trying to figure out the authorizations within BSNA so they can see everything. Uh, she's been finding just, actually nothing of really concerned that I am concerned about honestly. Um, there's a lot of, she's been finding things like that are people that have multiple pay rates that are, it's hard to follow. So I just need to clarify with her what she's found.
Okay.
So like Tim has, you know, a park one, a deputy supervisor one, uh, yeah, a trustee one.
Yeah, different rates of pay for different activity.
Yep.
So I did talk to them this afternoon. Um, and I spoke with Steve. He said that um, we've spent about four thousand dollars of the ten thousand dollars we authorized on a purchase order. And he said that they will continue to work as they're available through the end of this year. They think there will be some activity they'll have to work on to wrap up the payroll early in January. And then at that point into January is when they will move forward and start looking at the stuff on the revenue and expense report. So all the revenue booking and all of the expenses. And so um, at this point, uh, he said he would recommend that we should probably authorize another ten thousand dollars to get to our next board meetings. That would be more than enough to cover that. But just being, being aware that definitely even just for the payroll, it, it might exceed the ten thousand.
Can I ask where we are with the audit? And the only reason why I'm wondering is because we, Andy and I are at a standstill with.
Um, that's a different topic and we can take that up during board discussion.
Okay.
So right now the topic is just the manor custodians and um, CPA services to help audit our financials um, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget year. And the need for a purchase order for some additional money to fund. and the need for a purchase order for some additional money to fund that. Um, the reason I say this is important is I, I think from a contractual standpoint, they shouldn't, I don't want to slow down their work. And we need to make sure that we keep careful track of how much we're spending. That's why I'm suggesting only releasing another ten thousand dollars authorization, so we don't slow them down.
I totally agree and support that.
It won't, it won't wait until January meeting or?
I think that there's just concern that, you know, if they have resources available, they can start actually working on your revenue and expense stuff simultaneously. If they, I mean, right now we're kind of in a pinch with the holiday. So I just, I think this is do care to make sure that it's not a reason for them not to prioritize our work. Other questions? Alright, if not, I'm going to make a motion to authorize a purchase order for another ten thousand dollars for CPA services through manor Kester.
I will second.
So a motion made by Slopsima and seconded by Kester. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None opposed? So that motion passes and Wendy, that will be your action to, um, issue an authorization. Actually, the next thing on here was a civil infraction ordinance. We had a short discussion on that last month. And I wanted to bring this back for a discussion of next steps. I don't necessarily have a motion prepared for this. I would just like to introduce this topic by saying, to summarize my comments again from last month, was just that, um, I believe that it, it, it would be the correct thing to do to proceed to try and, uh, work on a civil infraction ordinance that addresses some of the concerns in the public hearing that we had in September. The biggest one that I heard was, um, creating a very clear and as simple as possible flow chart such that the citizens are able to clearly understand the process and be confident of what steps are taken prior to any kind of a citation or ticket issuance. And I have spoken to some other attorneys other than our attorney that say that that is a possibility and those things do exist. I spoke to our attorney and he said they do not have something like that available, so this would entail working with a different attorney. And trying to build off of best practices from others. I think we had a citizen that also cited, uh, another township in Long, in, uh, Grand Tavers County that they felt had something that was fair. So other comments?
Agreed.
Comments from you Jill?
No comment.
Um, then what I would say is I would make a motion to authorize the supervisor to move forward to contact, um, an attorney other than, uh, Fahy Schultz to try and discover some options for a civil infraction ordinance and then that would be brought back to the board.
I'll second that.
So a motion made by Slopsima, seconded by Hoxima. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, um, Jill, when I call for those in favor, you, you say aye or nothing. And then for those opposed, that's when you would say you're opposed. Um, would you like a roll call on that Wendy?
Thank you.
Okay, then go ahead with a roll call Wendy.
Kester.
No.
Slopsima.
Yes.
Hoxima.
Yes.
Alright, uh.
Carried.
I'm sorry, motion carried. And the supervisor will follow up to work with an alternate attorney on this. Uh, consideration of parks and recreation five-year plan. Uh, Jill?
Yeah, so, um, we are at the final stages of having our five-year plan, um, ready for public review and we are hoping at today's meeting that we can get that passed for public review. I think we have addressed every concern that the board has had. We've made all the changes that the board has requested. Um, I do want to clarify, um, that the board was given, uh, the correct copy of the previous draft that did not have the latest Randy's comments added to it, but the, the previous one to that on October twenty-fifth, it was emailed to everyone. Um, unfortunately, the wrong draft got put in the last month's packet. Um, but it was also posted and in the, included in the email that it was, um, available on, uh, the OneDrive under the board's, uh, shared file as well. So it has been accessible to the board since October twenty-fifth. Um, we did make, like I said, all the changes that Randy wanted in that plan as well and we are ready to move forward. Um, in speaking with the D N R, they were very pleased with our plan. They said it's above and beyond what they normally see. It meets all the criteria. It's ready to go. There is nothing holding us back from being able to approve this for public comment. Historically, by understanding is that, um, there is generally very little to no public comment at this point. We have gathered all of our public comment during the survey this summer and the five-year plan is based on the results of that survey of what our public, um, and our residents want to see in this area. So the whole five-year plan is put together based on that. Again, as Melissa was saying, um, they want it to be fairly broad. Um, they don't want us to get into specific details right now, um, because that can be changed and developed. Um, I still think that we have a very good chance of making some, um, progress yet this year and meeting the April first deadline because we do not have to have shovel-ready projects. Uh, we can have just a good overview and plan of what we want to do and, you know, one of the things that has come up year after year after year is having a paved walking path around High Prairie Park. Um, they said that they can take some pretty general overlays and, um, plans and some ideas to get the ball rolling and as long as you apply by the April first deadline, you have up until December the following year, if I'm understanding correctly, to make changes to that plan and to tweak it and to, to get the D N R's feedback to get higher points and a more likelihood of getting that grant approved. So we have lots of opportunities. And I would just hate to waste an entire year of time by not even trying. So.
So can I ask a clarifying question is, um, I'm looking at page sixty-two of, of the plan where it says action plan. This is where there's a lot of details about projects. Are you saying they were giving you guidance that that level of detail is unnecessary? Or it should be less detailed, less specific?
It is kind of right where it needs to be. What they, what they don't need at this point is the shovel-ready engineering projects and really detailed plans because we don't know how we're going to put some of these projects together. We might be able to package some of these projects, so.
So I, I think I understood that already. I was just asking whether or not this page sixty-two and sixty-three would, if they were asking you to make them more general.
No, they thought this plan was really well-done as is and it's meeting all of their criteria.
So I had, um, some concerns after looking at this more thoroughly recently. So I don't think that, like, I realize what Randy was saying now that this was in D N R optimized order. Um, I think that section four needs to be in with section one. Uh, the reviewers need to be, find the info very easily. Um, I understand that you do need more, the public input's going to still be included into this. But in order for this to be grant-ready and to be used, I think that you need to use more buzzwords. I actually put this into AI and it gave it a score of three out of five, so it's a basically a C grade. Um, it needs to have buzzwords, you know, s- such as stewardship and sustainable management and things like that that are geared towards more writing a grant. Uh, also today I had members of the public that actually was a planning commission member that said, where's the capital improvement plan? Cause that has to be included in this as well. So she was concerned that without a capital improvement plan, this is not going to be accepted.
Uh, that is not accurate information. The capital improvement plan does not need to be in here. And this checks all the box in the plan that is, um, it's ready to go to the D N R. This is, it is above and beyond what they normally get.
They also ask for like long-term, um, how your asset management kind of thing. Um, how are you going to maintain any kind of grant money that they have, any collaboration with any agencies? Um, the whole budget is in here. I thought that was a little bit much. You should probably take it down to just the rec fund and not have all these notes included in it. It's just a little confusing, I thought.
That's just all in the appendix.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, those are just reference documents.
Can I clarify again? What is the date that you're trying to hit? Are you trying to hit March one?
It's February, February first. It has to be, um, ready for the D N R. So we have, it has to have thirty-day public comment. So if it is approved today for the thirty-day public comment, which, you know, the board still has the ability to make comments too. So if these things that Wendy's talking about, we can look into those. Um, you know, we still have thirty days to make those changes.
So you're saying, my question was very simple. So the target date you're trying to hit, February one, in order to be eligible for those three buckets of grants.
And it can still be also, um, as a hearing at a planning commission meeting too. It doesn't have to be our board meeting.
Okay.
Says it right here on.
A public hearing you're talking about?
Yeah, a public hearing, yeah.
And we could do a special public, you know.
But ultimately, I believe it has to be a township board. Somehow the township board has to at some point.
Correct.
Uh, enter into a vote. Okay.
And so we have to have a little time after the public hearing. You know, there needs to be a little bit of time to make some changes too. So that's why we're really at the deadline today. We need to make a decision. It's either going to happen or it's not. I mean, if it's not approved today, then I don't see any possible way of making the deadline for this year and we will have wasted an entire.
Here's my concern that I'd like to voice is, um, you know, and we talked about this last month too. I mean, it's good that we had ninety-seven people respond to a survey, but that's only ninety-seven out of roughly twenty-seven hundred registered voters. That's only a three-point-five percent participation. So I would really like to make sure we get more feedback from the public. Um, I think that's really critical and I think all of the board members need to weigh in on, um, the specific projects and how they tie into current activity and current information. You know, other plans that we may be aware of that the prac wasn't. So I think there's probably an opportunity for some updates to some of that. I'm also concerned about trying to get public input over a holiday period and early January. I mean, I'm just, I mean, we can post things and we can, you know, do all the notification requirements, but, um, I think it's a just a unfortunate, it's unfortunate that at this time of year, a lot of people are not very engaged in this kind of a thing because they're busy with their families and it's the dead of the winter and we're missing a ton of our residents. You know, and, and so, I mean, my, my concern is just, in my opinion, thirty days isn't enough time to try and.
Well, as.
Well, engage in this as, as we really should or would like to have them engaged in it.
The survey was.
I mean, we could consider a mailing, I mean.
Well, we did, we asked for a mailing, um, for the survey. Um, and the township board did not want to approve that for monetary reasons. We also saved money by not going to a professional outside service, um, and did it all ourselves in-house. And historically, there has never been a lot of public input, unfortunately, for these types of projects. So, you know, I guess our, my feeling is, is if we approve it for public comment over the next thirty days and we have an overwhelming amount of people making comments or wanting to make changes, then, you know, at the next meeting we say, let's push it back and not, you know, let's push it back. We're, we're just not ready. But I think at this point, you know, we did everything we could to solicit public input during the survey process this summer and this is what we have. Um, and it more than meets the criteria to be passed by the D N R and we have some projects that we think that we could meet a deadline for April first.
So, um, Wendy, are you aware of what the, um, you know, what you're noticing in publication requirements are on this? So can you tell us what that is?
Oh, basically.
What, what will you need to do just like?
Uh, to put it in the public, even like a public hearing, um, notice of a public hearing in the publication. So like the El Crapad News. Stating this was thirty days from this date, you have a time to make a public.
And then we make it available in the hall and put it on the website.
Yep.
So that's the routine for that. And then to make a decision to add it to, so we also have to publicize a public hearing.
Right, yep.
And that's at least fifteen days ahead.
Held after the thirty-day public review period.
Okay.
So that's why we were kind of targeting.
So the January twenty-second. Public hearing needs fourteen days.
And I agree that that's a bit of a problem doing that during the day. I mean, I think that is absurd.
Yeah.
To do that during the day.
So basically we're eking it out today.
I would say that I, I can't, i- if we are also approving when to schedule a public hearing, which you really have to decide today because otherwise if you wait till the January meeting, it's too late.
Actually, Gi- today's December eleventh, then thirty days would be January eleventh. You need fourteen days to have a public hearing notice.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So we, if we're going to try and have a public hearing right away, then you, depending on the timeframe in which we're trying to do that.
He would still take a special meeting.
It, well, you have to decide today if you want to do it in a certain timeframe. Just because if you wait till our meeting on the eighth to agree to hold a public hearing, it is.
Too late.
Too late.
Correct.
So that's why we have to make, we have to be well-aware of what we're agreeing to do at this point. And I would say that I am opposed to a daytime meeting on a topic like this. I don't think it's appropriate to ever have a public hearing in the middle of the day when people are working.
Uh, take a very short special meeting to approve it.
So you're suggesting a special, a choice of a special day.
Yeah. I mean, I just think it's a huge disservice to our residents to not try.
Just focus on what we can do and, you know, I.
Calendar, there might not be much.
There either. Just pulling that up too, to look what we've got available in January, in the evening.
And I don't think it is, I know, yeah, I mean, yes, we could tag it on to a planning commission meeting, but I'm, I'm not sure that that is appropriate to steal their time for this. Um, I don't know. You just never know with a public hearing how many people will come out. You just don't know.
So it looks like we could do it on the, as early as the fifteenth. We could do it on the fifteenth of January. We could also do it the evening of the twenty-first.
Fifteenth is as soon as you can do it. Fifteenth is the soonest.
Any thoughts on either of those Jill?
Um, either date would work for me.
So you're not going to make the February first deadline doing that. So this is my point. You have to have the thirty days of public review have had already been accomplished, then do a public hearing.
The public hearing, my understanding can be on the same date as the public hearing.
So I can't do a public, saying that right?
Yes, the public hearing date can be the same date that we make a decision.
Yes, but I'm saying I have to do a public hearing announcement fourteen days ahead of time.
Yes.
That thirty-day period had to have already finished before I can do an announcement of a public hearing.
Why?
It's what it says. Held after the thirty-day public review hearing.
Yeah, I don't think you have to wait fourteen days to announce the date.
Soliciting public input is advertised public hearing held after the thirty-day. So how can I say that we're going to have?
So I, I think as long as it occurs after the thirty-day window. So a lot of this depends on how quickly also you can get this published. Because the soonest you could publish this in the El Crapad News would be, the publishing date would be actually, isn't the publishing date on the El Crapad News on Thursdays?
Yes.
So the soonest you could get that.
Is the eighteenth.
Is on the eighteen. Is on the eighteenth. So it's a week from today is the publishing date. So go back to the calendar now. So that would mean the only, the, probably the soonest viable date would be, um, you could have it at the Parks and Recreation being on the twentieth. You could just use that time slot.
Where are we going two days ahead of a meeting then?
Because our meeting's at nine AM.
Oh, true.
So you could do it either on the twentieth or on the twenty-first. And then the board could, um, decide how they feel about it at the meeting on the twenty-second. That could work. But again, if there's lots of comments that need correction, it gives very little time. So for that reason, I would tend to suggest using the twentieth.
I would agree with that.
Cause at least that gives you a business day. All right. Are you guys ready to vote? Yeah. Um, and, uh, Jill, I would like you to figure out how to include the public hearing date in your motion, please.
All right. So we decided on the twentieth at what time?
I would, I would just use the existing time, seven PM.
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the five-year plan for the Parks and Recreation draft for public comment for the next thirty days with the, um, public comment being held on January twentieth at seven PM. It's public hearing. Or public hearing, I'm sorry, public hearing, no, seven PM.
And this is through a special meeting?
Yep, it sure will be.
Um, that I would suggest also be included in the verbiage, is public hearing at a special meeting. And you said seven PM, Jill? Thank you.
Want me to rewrite that?
I'd love for you to rewrite that.
Uh, motion to approve the Parks and Recreation five-year plan draft for public comment for the next thirty days with a public hearing being scheduled at a special meeting on January twentieth at seven PM.
Uh, I will second that motion. So motion made by Kester, seconded by Slopsima. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, none opposed, the motion passes. So the action on that is, uh, Clerk Hoaxma will get this published in the paper for the availability of the rec plan for comment. And additionally, uh, she will do the noticing for the special meeting, public hearing on January twentieth, twenty twenty-five. All right. Next item that we have, uh, on our new business is post office property inquiry. I just have a verbal update on this. Um, the post office works with Jones Lang LaSalle, which is a, a large, um, real estate, commercial real estate company, um, seeking a location for a new post office. They contacted us regarding the property um, on old M seventy-two, uh, that is currently used by the fire chief for, uh, his training seat tainer, um, that he does like, um, confined space type smoke training there. And it's right adjacent to the ball field that's on the, on the west side of, uh, High Prairie Park. Um, so they contacted us, we actually have two parcels there. Um, I had, uh, Assessor Dawn come up with an approximate price and she came up with about a hundred thousand dollars for that property. I provided that feedback to them. Also told them that we would be somewhat interested in the post office property, but that's not owned by the postal service. It's owned by a third party that buys post offices.
What property are you saying is, was a hundred thousand?
The property that's basically across from the fire station, but then a little bit to the west, we own that, a fairly large lot there. So there's a couple of small homes across from the post office. And then there's a vacant, larger parcel. It's about one and a half acre.
Kind of the access to the back.
It, it is, it is what's used to the access to the back ball field.
Okay.
And so, um, I told them we would want to continue to have access. He was like, that's gonna be a problem. So anyway, uh, he did follow up. There's really nothing, nothing firm yet. Uh, he did say, what other properties do you have? So I sent him a list. I said, you wanna, I'm kind of busy right now. Why don't you go look at these properties online? And I told him how to do it. So I haven't heard anything back from him in three, four days. But that's just for your awareness and if you have any feedback for me, I'm listening. So. I did talk to Josh briefly, um, it's kind of inconvenient if we decided to enter into any agreement like that with them. We would have to move the seat tainer right now. So that, that would be something we would have to figure out. Um, and it is kind of disappointing. Um, he did volunteer to talk to the postal service about if they would have any leverage with the property owner. It was interesting. Dawn said that the post office was actually just purchased by this other real estate company only about a year ago. So.
Can I show you something? Just, I'm just wanting to make sure I understand where you're talking about.
Yep.
Is that that, what you're talking about?
Yeah, I'd rather show you on the property net. It's a vacant lot.
So that's where the house is and I thought we already did on that. So be. That's where the fire. That's where they had access to go.
That's right. And I believe that's right in parting to see on what these things are, but yes, yes. So it's like this one.
So this is probably one and a half acre.
So anyway, what other, uh, what other questions or feedback do you have for me? That's the question.
I think we need to keep our high prey park together, not piece it out.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking I would rather buy more of those properties in there as opposed to, so, um, yeah. All right. Well, that's good feedback. You have any feedback on that?
No, I think, yeah, I think we, it would make sense to purchase it if we could, for sure.
Oh, if we could purchase more as opposed to selling that.
Right, yeah.
All right, purchase it more. So anyway, all right, I will keep you updated on, on anything else that comes up with that. Obviously they're talking to us because they didn't uncover anything else with their postcard mailer that they sent out. All right, yeah. Next we have Wendy, Deputy Clerk Wage Approval.
I, this memo I gave to the board today is that I appointed a new deputy clerk, Amanda Fendlin. Um, I feel like she's gonna be a really good fit for my office. I'm really excited about it. Uh, my requesting board approval for her starting pay rate and I am making a motion to approve deputy clerk's starting pay rate of twenty-two dollars an hour for Amanda Fendlin effective immediately. And she is here today too, if you'd like to meet her.
Yep.
Oh. Yeah, right here. Amanda, would you like to come up to the podium?
All right. Yep. Hi, I'm Amanda Fendlin and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I think you're the only one I have that.
Yeah, nice. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
What is your background? I guess tell us a little bit about yourself.
My background is pretty extensive. I currently substitute teach at my son's school at Lakeland Elementary. I live in Whitewater Township. I, um, have a background in dental hygiene, banking. I come with a notary public. Um, I don't know. What else would you like to know?
Small business.
I'm small business. I owned my own business. I was also a hairstylist for twenty-some years.
Great. Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Um, so this is just a, a brief question is just, um, like, is there any information about how the two of you are planning on breaking up duties?
Have yet.
Not yet? Okay. All right. I have met Amanda, so I don't have any further questions. All right, I will second the motion to approve the deputy clerk's starting pay rate of twenty-two dollars per hour effective immediately. All right, so motion made by Hoaxma, seconded by Slopsima. All, uh, do, we don't need a roll call vote on this, right?
Ma, I don't think so.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, none opposed, motion passes. All right.
Right.
Thank you.
You, welcome. Thank you, Amanda. All right. The next thing we have is a, um, information on a attorney proposal. Wendy?
Uh, so we did send out a bunch of proposals, like you guys knew. Uh, we received, the only one, the only one we received back was from attorney Peter Wendling. He has presented a, um, proposal to, for us to sign. Um, he's familiar with local issues, needs, legal requirements, common to townships of our size. He's been representative of many northern Michigan townships, uh, like ours. Um, and I just would like to propose a motion to approve the retainer agreement with Marshall and Bruce Law Firm, P C, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign on behalf of Whitewater Township. It's also cheaper than our current one.
Did we happen to get any references from some of the other townships on this guy's work?
Um, I did get one reference specifically, uh.
I thought the rest of his stuff was gonna be included in here. So that was missing.
Did that come up missing? So he, he has worked extensively, like, almost lots and lots of, um, townships. What happened is when he closed his business, the people that bought his business was, I believe, a firm out of Kalamazoo. And, um, he had to sign a non-compete. And so he was in good standing with all of these clients around, including people like East Bay and did work for them, for Beth's Friend. And, um, so he's pretty well-known, but he, um, had to give up those clients.
List, part of the sales.
Thirty of them that are just like all around us. Yeah, we could get that document for you. It got, it didn't get put into the packet, it looks like. So, um, and specifically Deb Graber had worked with him in the past when she was at, I believe, Abilene Township. So.
Could I ask a question before you move on to a second on this? With the, on the motion, I see in the attachment, there's also a resolution of the same title. As far as I understand, that resolution number should be in the, uh, motion itself, please.
So I meant to add, uh, an approved resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-one. Thank you. Um, I'd just like to add to that Wendy and I interviewed him together. And I was very impressed with his background and also his straightforward and clear answers to questions. Very easy to understand. He was not circular at all. Okay. All right. So I would like to second the motion. So motion made by Hoaxma, seconded by Slopsima.
I think I should probably read, read the resolution.
Um, do we, uh, do we just read the resolution as part of this then?
Yep.
Is, is really, um, can. Go ahead.
Uh, Whitewater Township Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-one, Grant Travers County, Michigan, approval of retainer agreement for Township Legal Counsel Attorney Peter Wendling. Whereas Whitewater Township requires professional legal counsel to advise the township board, supervisor, clerk, treasurer, and township departments on matters involving municipal law, contracts, zoning enforcement, and statutory obligations. And whereas Attorney Peter Wendling of Marshall Bruce Law Firm, P C, has submitted a proposal to serve as legal counsel for Whitewater Township. And whereas eternal, Attorney Wendling has over twenty years of experience representing numerous Michigan townships and possesses substantial expertise in municipal law, making him well-qualified to serve the legal needs of Whitewater Township. And whereas the township board finds it necessary and in the best interests, interest of the township to retain experienced legal counsel to ensure proper guidance, compliance with state law, and support for ongoing township operations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Whitewater Township Board hereby approves the retainer agreement with Marshall and Bruce Law Firm, P C, authorizes Attorney Peter Wendling to serve as Township Legal Counsel and further authorizes the supervisor and clerk to execute all necessary documents on behalf of Whitewater Township.
As we need a roll call vote?
It is a roll call vote.
Okay. Slopsima, please proceed.
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Hoaxma, yes. And then absent, I will mark. All right. So motion passes and resolution is adopted. All right. So Clerk Hoaxma and myself will sign the contract and Clerk Hoaxma will execute the resolution. All right. Uh, next thing we have is, uh, supervisor salary change, which is budget neutral, meaning the budget will not be affected by this resolution. Um, I think you guys could all read what this is. Is that effective January fourth? I'm reducing my work schedule to two days per week and proportionally reducing my annual salary to twenty-three thousand dollars per year. That's my request. Um, the supervisor's office will remain with the same work to be completed and will meet all statutory requirements. The deputy supervisor will assist with covering responsibilities due to this change. So there's a resolution here. So are there any questions or concerns?
You know, questions? No questions?
All right. Would you like me to read the resolution or would you like?
It's your turn. Okay, so resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, salary for supervisor twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six. Amend, um, calendar, budget year amended twelve eleven twenty twenty-five, Whitewater Township, Grant Travers County. Whereas pursuant to M C L A forty-one point nine five three, which provides that in a township which does not hold an annual, meaning the salary for the officers composing the township board shall be determined by the township board. And whereas in addition to statutory duties, the Whitewater Township Administrative Policy and Procedure Manual and Township Ordinance assigns various duties to the Office of Township Supervisor, herein duties for which the base salary has been calculated. And whereas Township Board deems that the adjustment in base salary of the Office of Supervisor is warranted for these statutory duties. Now therefore be it resolved that as of pay ending on January fourth, twenty twenty-six, paid date, um, January ninth, twenty twenty-six, the yearly base salary of the Township Supervisor shall be twenty-three thousand dollars. And a motion was made to the foregoing resolution, um, uh, I will make the motion to adopt this resolution to reduce the salary of the supervisor to twenty-three thousand dollars. And I need a second on that.
I'll make a second. I'm sorry, again with the resolution number being attached to the motion, please.
All right. So I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to reduce the salary of the supervisor to twenty-three thousand dollars per resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two.
And for consistency on all the others, um, I suggest twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two instead of twenty-five dash twenty-two.
I was gonna change it. I'm also gonna change the M C L. It says M C L A. It's not, that's not right. It shouldn't be M C L.
Okay.
It should be just.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So what do you folks want me to do with this?
No, it's just how you stated it.
All right.
I'll second that.
So motion made by Slopsima, seconded by Kester, and then roll call vote.
Hoaxma, yes. Kester, yes. Slopsima, yes. And then the absentees.
All right. So Clerk Hoaxma will complete.
Resolution adopted.
A resolution adopted. Clerk Hoaxma will adjust the payroll system and. Resolution adopted. Clerk hoaxima will adjust the payroll system and certify the resolution. Well, I'm at the end of the list. We have no tabled items. Uh, board comments or discussion? Jill, I think you had an item earlier in the meeting.
Yeah. So I just wanted to be clear that I would be more than happy to enter revenue numbers if I had the ability to do so. I do not have the admin rights to go back and enter these. So, um, you know, my, I guess, solution would be either the BSNA admin, which is Wendy, gives me the right to, uh, enter these things. Or I can give her the information a third time and hope that she enters them. Um, we just want this done. And then the reason why I was inquiring about the audit earlier is we are at a standstill. I cannot do any reconciliations until we get the balance of March 2026 cleared out and we have a clear starting point to move forward from. So, um, you know, we just really need to get this done and get it moving in the right direction because we're, you know, we have our hands tied. And we're, we're ready to move forward. The other thing, do, well, I guess, does anybody have any comments of that?
I think we talked about this earlier, about you two getting together and figuring out how to get, how to get that updated. Because the follow-on action is for you to do the balancing activity that's required.
And we're ready to do it. We just, we can't move forward.
Right. I think you guys need to work on that together.
Um, the only other thing I would just like to bring up in board discussion is, um, it's just an idea or a proposal, whatever, uh, that we consider giving Tim a raise. I think he's the only employee in the entire township that did not get a raise last year. And I just think he's doing an enormous, an enormous amount of work for our township above and beyond the call of duty. And I just think that he deserves a little increase.
So you're suggesting that that be done prior to the normal budget cycle? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yeah. I think it should have been done quite a while ago, honestly, but.
I think he's kind of looking at all the rates of pay. So just, just FYI, there's probably changes needed other places too.
We planned on sitting down and talking about the budget, but we are also waiting on everything to be completed. So it's a standstill, actually. I mean, we are, we need to, we need to have the auditor do his things too. So.
And what is a holdup with the audit?
Can you clarify that, please?
Well, we don't have one topic.
We don't have the final audit, I'm saying, you know. Well, I also think we shouldn't adjust any, any more pays, if at all possible. Um, prior to, um, or the, your payroll work being completed.
Oh, no, I'm, I was talking about the upcoming budget, you know?
Okay.
We were trying to sit down and we can't, yeah, we can't start any of that until we have everything done.
Okay. And, and now second topic of the audit, I expect that to hit my desk any moment. Because I believe that we've, Wendy and I already had a conference with him. He gave us the, uh, what are, I can't remember the right term, that the, the things that she needs to correct.
A draft, a proposed, the proposed journal entries.
The, yes, the journal entries. He already provided the journal entries that are required, that's already been reviewed. He also sent, um, some additional items that Wendy already responded to, reviewed and responded to. So I think it's like any moment it should be done. But certainly I can follow up on that. I mean, I, I really expected to have it this week. Because I think you finalized your input back last week, was it right?
Uh huh.
Mid, mid to late last week. So any moment, I would think that they would want to get paid. Other board comments or discussion? All right.
Our comments are we can get faster without mails, but I'm just saying.
All right. So, uh, announcements, I've got an announcement here that the next township board meeting is on Thursday, January 8th. And that is an evening meeting.
Uh, it's closed.
Pardon me?
Offices closed for holidays.
Oh, yes.
Be an announcement.
Okay. So do you want to give us those dates or are they?
Well, I think that most people probably aren't expecting us to be open on Friday anyway. So 24, 25 and 26, and then 31, 1 and 2 to be closed here. Okay. Those will be the typical government closures.
Are we going to, um, update the calendar to reflect that?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Can we also please post that on the door?
Sure.
I, or on the, probably good to actually tape it on the door just because, um, a lot of people are in and out of here paying taxes this time of year.
Could I clarify two details, please?
Sure.
The 1/8 meeting, um, PM, is that at 6:30?
Yep, normal time. It's a regularly scheduled meeting.
And Wendy, the offices closed January 24, 25, 26?
December 24, 25, 26, January, I'm sorry, December 31st, January 1st, January 2nd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it looks like you've already got, um, some of it, some of it on here. So you just have to add the Fridays in there.
And do we have a notice Jill for your last, or your last day in December for collecting tax? Usually there's a date.
Um, it's not December. It's not until February. It's February 14th is when they typically do. Um, but because the 14th was on a weekend or a Friday or something, we were not charging any penalties until after the 17th.
So I thought that there was, I thought there was a provision where sometime prior to the 31st, you had to have, do you have to have any additional designated times?
Prior to December 31st?
Yeah, I thought there was something to do.
Holiday period. Oh, yeah. One eight hour shift between New Year's and Christmas.
If that's a requirement.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, are you gonna post that on the door?
I can do that.
Or was it already on the tax bill or no?
It was not on the tax bill. I can put it on the door.
Okay. Um, probably be good to.
What day is that?
Yeah. Do you know when that?
Uh, December 30th.
Okay. So you'll be, that'll be an all day?
Nine to five.
Okay. Yeah, okay. So add that in there too. But these minutes won't be out in time for them to read it there. So. Yeah. If you could post that on the door, I'm sure people would appreciate that, that are trying to hit, hit it by the end of the year. Any other announcements? All right. With that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, public comment.
I'm sorry. You're right. It was on the next page.
Yep.
That's why I missed it. Flip. Thank you for the catch, people. All right. Second public comment. Who would like to make a public comment?
Julie Zenas, Skigampoint Road. It's funny enough, the first comment I had was congratulations on an efficiently run meeting. Congratulations. Maybe there is something to it. Um, I also want to recognize and thank the supervisor and clerk for taking action to work with the new attorney on options for a news, for a civil infraction ordinance. Back at the public meeting at the end of, at the late September, I was the first one to stand up and comment and ask for this. I appreciate that this is finally moving forward. We need a clear and fair ordinance that distinguishes between ordinances itself and the penalties ensure, ensuring that the penalties are truly fitting the, the offense. For example, if an illegal short-term rental is making $866 per night, the penalty must be sufficient enough to deter that illegal activity. A fine that is too small becomes just a cost of doing business rather than an effective deterrent. This approach will help maintain fairness, transparency and compliance within the community. I also want to bring up, it actually pertains to the letter that I sent in. There's been multiple references that I'm hearing. I went to the ROWG meeting. I sat here. Um, I actually listened in on the November 13th meeting, board meeting. And the minutes were just approved and it's actually in the minutes. Where our township treasurer herself stated that, um, references of an STR ordinance. And that a civil infraction ordinance wasn't needed because the STR ordinance would take care of it. So my concern is, how do we know that? How do we have the confidence to say that in a board meeting? We must know specific details about something that's not being shared with the community that needs to be shared or whatever driving factor is because it was stated. The reality is, it, it's my understanding, it's still unclear based on what the framework is right now of an ordinance or whether, whether it even should be one. When the research hasn't even been completed. The research to date, I stat in the last meeting, I've read the papers, I've read all of the research is actually very biased right now. That group's responsibility is to present unbiased research brought forward. So I'm going to restate my, my concern. My concern is there's obviously conversations happening that are not being shared with the public. For our treasurer to have such a stance about an STR ordinance is going to take care of it and a civil infraction ordinance isn't needed. So I asked the board to come forth with, whatever you all know, please share. And if you don't know, maybe we need to be asking a few more questions of other board members. With that said, I'd like to thank you all for your time and I'd like to wish all of you a happy holidays.
All right. Would somebody else like to come forward and make a public comment?
Mick Jacobson, Skigampoint Road. Linda, I'd like to thank you for, uh, standing up and, uh, saying you shouldn't have a, a public hearing during the day. It should be done at night. Uh, I've thought that for a long time and, uh, I'm glad to hear you say that and stand up for the community with that comment and make that happen that way. Also, uh, it was a very productive meeting, but, uh, there's something that's, uh, in my opinion is embarrassing. It's, uh, rude and, uh, and, uh, inconsiderate. And that is, uh, this interrupting. Somebody at, on the board, I seen it happen three or four times sitting here tonight. One person would be trying to talk and other people would interrupt them while they're trying to make their statement. This is not a kitchen table conversation. This is a board meeting. Everybody should be able to say what they want, what they need to say, what their comments or their thoughts are. And then if somebody else around the table has, has information to correct that or, uh, rebut that or, or what have you, then it's their turn to speak up and talk. Everybody needs to put their feeling in their pocket and be professional and, and do the job they're asked to do. This is not an easy job. There's going to be criticism. Our feelings are not, should not be a part of this. And thirdly, I hear all this talk about parks and recreation, uh, money going out the door, being spent on all these projects. And I would like to know, I would like an answer to this question. I've asked, last administration, I couldn't get an answer out of them. I'm going to ask you, when is Whitewater Township going to live up to their responsibilities on the Battle Creek, it's actually called Barker, uh, Bottle Creek, but on the Battle Creek, uh, part of the park system? That land was partially bought or maybe completely bought. I can't remember. It's been so long since I read the paperwork with a DNR grant. And in that DNR grant, there were conditions and the conditions have not all been met. But yet we go on and we spend money on our park systems on other things. When, like, how long have we owned that piece of property? It's got to be going on close to 20 years. If it's not 20 years, and here we're not living up to our responsibility. I want to know when are we going to live up to our responsibility? You're spending my money at the Ball Diamond and at the, at the campground. Why don't you spend the money where you already have an obligation? I want to know why. Merry Christmas.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? All right. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at 8:15 PM.